Good evening. I'm John Wensky, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poplowski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, March 30th. First item on our agenda is public participation. Under Section 10 of School Committee Policy 123 regarding public participation, it states that "public participation is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. Comments made during public participation do not reflect the views or the positions of the school committee. The constitutional free speech rights of participants in public participation will be respected." The school committee's role in public participation is to listen, not respond, and will take your comments under advisement. Please be respectful of your time. I'll have a countdown clock in front of you, so you'll be able to be aware of that time. And as you approach the standing microphone, please introduce yourself for the record, full name, and street address. With that, I'll now call you up to speak in the order the requests were received, starting with Ms. Sanam Zaire.
I'm Sanam Zaire, H. Jamie Lane. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. As you are all aware, the topic of racism has been increasingly entering our local conversations and necessitating an increase in the direct action from both our school leaders and our community at large. While our community generally would agree that racism is wrong, there is a lot of disagreement in how it needs to be addressed, and navigating this issue largely falls on our schools. At times like this, it is important for us to keep moving forward by renewing our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. In speaking with the students involved in recent events and in my own personal experiences within Shrewsbury Public Schools, I can confidently say that we still have work to do in this regard. Some people go well out of their way to educate themselves about these topics and be a listening ear and strong support for our students. Others do not, and they end up either intentionally or inadvertently causing often invisible harm. Some of this is a direct consequence of the lack of racial and ethnic diversity among both our teaching staff and leadership team. These are missing perspectives at decision-making tables and missing friendships among staff members, which foster deeper understanding. While efforts have certainly been made to improve staff diversity at our schools, more can be done, and we need to think outside the box. I'm here to ask the school committee to work with district leaders on a long-term diversification plan and set a reasonable timeline with benchmarks to achieve these goals. We are a very strong school district, and diversity will only make us stronger. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up is Ms. Nora Lee.
Good evening, friends. That being the most important word here. I'm just here to acknowledge how heartening it was to hear from the members of the school committee in the last meeting, in how everyone stood together against racism and stood for the right of students to study and express their opinions around controversial topics. Particularly, I'd like to acknowledge the words of Ms. Heffernan from that meeting, where there was a bold acknowledgement made of how racism exists, and that in no way is a comment on the job that police officers do or do not do in the city, in the town. Also really important was the statement by Mr. Palish last week, where he said seriousness and commitment can really be shown when we think about how financially we will support bringing equity training or diversity training within the staff of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Dr. Sawyer's statement on how racism hurts everyone in America and not just marginalized populations was also really heartening to see. I am here also to speak a little bit about the equity plan that the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has put forward, and that is going into revision in 2023. I think that the language that Desi is using is bold and should also embolden us in the stance that we take, not just to see this as a right of students, but to see it as a responsibility towards Change Agency and equity and social justice in the nation. So I think the important thing over here is the boldness in the stance that we take on this. So I'm just going to read you just a few quotes from what Desi is saying right now in 2023, which is very close, hopefully. They say, "We define effective educators as educators who nurture and cultivate academic achievement, cultural and linguistic competence, and socio-political awareness. If we are consistent over time in adhering to this mission, we can work together to contribute to disrupting systemic inequities, in particular for Black, Latinx, Asian, Indigenous, and multiracial students and educators who have been most harmed through existing and historical policies and practices." Also, Desi goes on to say, "True equity in education requires that educators practice authentic self-examination and awareness of the perspectives and experiences of others." And really important, "In Massachusetts, this self-examination is particularly vital, given our disproportionately white teaching force and growing population of students of color." Desi also stated that "The Office of Public School Monitoring is committed to racial equity and to becoming an anti-racist organization." So take the words and really push this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Elizabeth Hilton. Is she present?
She's out of the country.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Next up would be Jaclyn Corano.
Thank you. Jaclyn Corano, 161 Gulf Street. I'm the parent of a sixth grader at Sherwood and a third grader at Patton. Patton, I always say Patton. An apparent representative on the Patton School Council. I wanted to share my deep gratitude tonight for how the Shrewsbury School District has handled the COVID-19 pandemic over the last two years. School district administrators and leaders, my family and I are so appreciative of your data-driven decision-making, your prioritization of the social, emotional needs of our students, and the awareness of the many different family configurations and situations that we needed to juggle to provide environments for learning. To our teachers and school staff, you are heroes. You deserve CEO-level salaries, but that's a discussion for a different meeting. A special shout-out to the elementary science teachers in April 2020, using their backyards as classrooms. And sharing the joy of exploring our natural world with our littlest ones. I didn't think this was gonna happen. Lastly, Dr. Sawyer, I can't think of a better example of leadership for our students. I know that no leader operates in a vacuum, but you set the tone. You hire the team, and you provide the vision, and this town is lucky to have you. Your clear, consistent, and transparent communication over the last two years put minds and hearts at ease during one of the most difficult times we could have imagined. Saying thank you feels like it's not enough, but it's what I can offer you tonight. I also wanted to use my time tonight to add to the ongoing discussion around racism in our schools and community, and the expressed desire for our schools to be a safe and supportive learning environment for our wide diversity of students. If we want to combat racism, we have to confront it openly and honestly. As a white-bodied person, my experience learning, and often unlearning, on the path to becoming anti-racist, is that we cannot leave this work to be purely intellectual or academic exercises. We must learn to notice and identify the places racism and white supremacy show up in our bodies. Did you notice your body constrict or tighten when I switched topics in my remarks? When I use the term "white supremacy," where do you feel that in your body? Does your chest tighten? Does your heart speed up? This bodily response isn't cause for shame, or guilt, or judgment. It's only to notice what happens in our bodies, near-instantaneous reactions driven by the most primitive parts of our brains, that part of our brains that works so much faster than the rational-thinking parts. If we are to succeed in our expressed intentions, we must learn to notice our bodies' reactions to be able to build a pause, a pause between reaction and response, a pause to change what happens next in our speech and in our actions. Only then can we build a community and a culture that supports and celebrates every citizen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, tonight, Ms. Melanie Petrucci.
Hi, Melanie Petrucci. I live at 1 Torrey Drive, Precinct 1, and I'm here on behalf of the Shrewsbury Republican Town Committee. And the letter I'm reading was a collaborative effort amongst our people, our group, and I'm here on behalf of Mindy McKenzie, who is our chair. She's out of the country. So, anyway. The Shrewsbury Republican Town Committee, SRTC, meets informally over coffee every Saturday morning with roughly a dozen people in attendance. This past Saturday, or a few Saturdays ago, excuse me, we discussed public monologues given at recent school committee meetings by candidate for Congress, Mr. Jeffrey Sosa-Pequette. Let us be clear, he does not express nor represent the values of our town committee. Rather, he has expressed his own personal opinions. During coffee, we regularly discuss difficult topics and current events in a civil and courteous manner. We listen, discuss, and exercise our free speech without being disrespectful. We may have differences of opinion, but we aren't disruptive, but we believe that good government comes from having a healthy discernment of ideas and facts with both sides coming to the table. Paramount to our community and our civilized society is maintaining a safe environment for our children to grow and to learn, and at no time is it ever acceptable for adults to say disparaging words to children. Our children must feel safe and secure in their school and community. It is also important for our young adults, was that me? My? It was for our young adults to have the ability to express themselves. We encourage to know that Shrewsbury teaches critical thinking and exploration of different ideas as a part of student development. Furthermore, it is positive to see an ongoing dialogue at the high school to understand the deeper issues at hand. In closing, the caring and kind words from the fourth-grade leaders that presented at your last meeting are lessons that everyone in our community, our Commonwealth, and our world desperately need to heed. While there is a lot going on within our party, the SRTC will continue to support our elected Republican leaders and practice civil discourse along the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to all the speakers that presented to the committee tonight. Appreciate your engagement. Public participation is a permanent fixture in our agenda. It is available to any and all residents who wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. For future meetings, if anybody wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of each meeting. The school committee encourages citizens of the district to watch our meetings so they become better acquainted with the operations and programming of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report today?
No.
Okay, great. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wensky. Some things to certainly celebrate this evening that are part of our school community. First off, I want to congratulate our speech and debate team, both, two of our speech and debate teams, who recently competed in the annual Mardi Gras tournament that Shrewsbury High School Speech and Debate hosts. Our Oak Middle School team, competing in a high school tournament, finished 10th out of the largest tournament that's hosted in the state each year. And our Shrewsbury High School team, the home team, finished first. So congratulations to them for hosting an event. Wonderful to have an in-person event after hiatus, and to their continued success this season. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate our Shrewsbury High School Robotics Team. In a recent U.S. First Robotics Competition, they received the Chairman's Award. That is considered to be the highest honor that robotics teams can receive. It's a combination of not only their prowess as far as the robot that they've designed and is competing in the competition, but also what they do for community outreach, how they present themselves in terms of communicating what their team does. It's a total team effort, and it continues the tradition of multiple Chairman's Awards over the last several years. So congratulations to our robotics team. Thirdly, I want to congratulate the Shrewsbury High School Girls Hockey Team, who for the first time in their history made the Final Four in the entire state in Division One. They lost a tough game in the Final Four, two to one, had a wonderful season, so congratulations to the players and the coaching staff of the high school hockey team, girls' hockey team. And then finally, just want to let people know that the annual Spring Musical is back. It'll be performed this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening, the 17th, 18th, and 19th, at 7:00 at Shrewsbury High School. It is the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, which I understand is a very humorous show. For those who are considering attending should know that it is some PG-13 content, so may not be suitable for young children. Families will have to make that decision. But it is terrific to have our student actors and musicians and stage crew and everyone, again, performing in the Spring Musical, which again is the 17th, 18th, and 19th. 7:00, you can walk up and get tickets in the high school lobby for any of those performances. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sarah. Comments or questions, colleagues? Anything? Okay. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a time-scheduled appointment. It is the district response to the pandemic, and with a report is Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I'll just pull up the slides. So this evening, I'm happy to report on where we are in terms of COVID positivity rates and cases. Again, our primary goal this year was to maintain our full-time in-person learning, minimize disruptions to that while minimizing the chances of contracting COVID-19 at school, which we've been very successful at so far. Our approach is threefold: implementing mitigation strategies to reduce the risk of transmission, working hard to create a sense of belonging to support students' social and emotional and mental health needs, which I'll speak to in a bit later as well, and to provide learning opportunities that support students' academic needs. This is the Johns Hopkins report we show each time. We're fortunate that the positivity rate, seven-day rate, in Massachusetts remains very low, at just over 1.5%, eighth lowest in the United States. You can see over time with the Omicron surge, where that went as high as 20% in early January, and now two reports in a row over the course of March, below 2%. So that's a very good news story. In terms of age cases, those have also continued to move down. You can see the notation for the 0- to 9-year-olds at the bottom, about 1,000 cases in the last state report. That was cut by half from the previous report. And for ages 10 to 19, reduced from over 4,000 to just over 1,800. So the trend continues to go in the right direction in our state. Hospital rates continue to be very rare for young people. Out of 100,000 children, averaging of, you know, two admissions for ages up to 11. Teenagers, just over one admission per 100,000 in the population. In terms of locally, cases in Shrewsbury have been holding steady since late February at about 30-plus cases a week. Ours have been pretty similar. I would say that the four over February vacation, some of those cases weren't reported to us until the week of March 4th, so that 15 the following week include some cases that happened the previous week, but we count them when we become aware of them. In terms of the week, last couple, last week, we were at 14. This week so far, we're at 11. So pretty consistent, low numbers, which you can see at the bottom of the page, you know, less than 1%, you know, one quarter of 1% the week after February vacation in terms of positivity rates among our student population. The 14-day positive test rate the state tracks for Shrewsbury is under 2% now as well. Again, a good trend. In terms of our cases, this week so far, we've had 15 cases overall. In terms of where we're at for the year, we're now just over 1,870 cases. In terms of vaccination and unvaccination, unvaccinated people, we have among the cases, you can see the percentage is there, and so we continue to track what that looks like. We publish our dashboard every week, of course, just a reminder to, if people want to know what number of cases we've had the previous week, publish that each Monday, a main link on our homepage. This graph, we show the cases by day over time. This is as of March 11th, and then you can see on a week-to-week basis, obviously that's similar curve with the major peak coming right after the December break and falling down to numbers that we had previously in the fall over the last several weeks. In terms of by school, obviously some of this is sensitive to the size of the school, but that gives you a sense of each of our schools, what the number of cases are. And this is by grade, what the distribution is over the course of the pre-K through grade Terms of total cases of students and staff, these are the most recent report numbers, We have been reporting on vaccination data by age. You can see these numbers are pretty similar to the last time I reported, two weeks ago. We haven't seen much change. We do have a free vaccination clinic offered by, through the State Department of Public Health that's occurring at Oak Middle School tomorrow evening, and, I'm sorry, not tomorrow. Double-checked the date. I don't think it's tomorrow. But it's on Saturday, not tomorrow. And we did send out an email reminder today to all families and staff, and if you're interested in participating on Saturday, there's a quick Google form to fill out just to let them know so they can have the appropriate amount of doses there. So on Saturday, at Oak Middle School, it is a walk-up clinic, so even if you don't pre-register, that's fine. Oak Middle School over the course of late morning, early afternoon. This is some data, just when people want to look at the slides on our website, which are posted tomorrow, just comparisons of vaccination rates around, compared to surrounding communities. The proportion really hasn't changed much since the last two week, report two weeks The testing program continues. We've been using our centralized testing site on Maple Avenue at the municipal, I'm sorry, the Maple Avenue Fields. If someone is symptomatic, they can get approval to go there and get a free rapid test. We've tested 210 individuals since we began doing this in mid-January. The result of positivity has been 23%, but none of those have been since March 1st. So anyone who's been symptomatic, who's been gone there for testing, has not tested positive so far this month. In terms of our routine safety testing, which is the swab test that goes to the lab each week that people can participate in, the percentage of people participating has dropped a bit from about 25% of our students and staff to 17%. That has changed since we started adapting the rapid testing program as well, which we'll talk about in a moment. But over the course of this, over the course of the year, we've had about 30,000 samples and a 1% positivity rate there. Again, it's helpful to do this, so we're catching cases that are asymptomatic as soon as we can. The at-home antigen testing, rapid testing program came, started in late January. We've got about 645 staff and 1,940 students participating. In terms of positive results from those, we've only had two positive results reported to date. But again, and I know this evening, we've got a message, those of us participating, a reminder that on Wednesday night is when we ask people to take that rapid test. They get a kit with two tests every other week. They're asked to take it each Wednesday evening. As far as student attendance, that has improved again, and we're back to really where we're typically are in, you know, this time of year with about 4% absence rate. You can see this is on a chart form where we're at since the February break, so pretty typical numbers, not really being affected in any significant way by COVID. In terms of staff absences, that has come down significantly since the Omicron surge, and, you know, we're down to about 4% since February break. The proportion of that due to COVID is very de minimis because it's only one or two people, and you can see that from this chart, whereas the staff absences are in blue and staff absences due to COVID are in red. So compared to the large proportion after the December break, this has become a much more manageable situation in terms of that kind of staff absenteeism we were coping with in the early winter. This is the statistic for this year in terms of before and after vacation. We've now been able to track the two weeks post-Febuary vacation, and again, it's a good news story compared to the December break, where obviously we had the huge spike during the midst of the surge. The numbers have actually been coming down despite the fact that we had the February vacation period. So again, our primary goal is to maintain our in-person learning, you know, sunshine, optional masking, that things are, you know, certainly a more positive feel among people. I think what we're seeing with, has been reported to me in terms of masking, is that as time has gone on, since it became optional a couple of weeks ago, that there's been more students who are choosing not to wear their mask. I don't have a statistic for that, but I, you know, I've heard anywhere from, you know, roughly a fifth to a quarter of students might be wearing them. Generally, overall, that might be more in some places and less in others, but I've had no reports of any concerns with students being made to feel uncomfortable one way or another based on their choice, or staff for that matter. We'll continue to emphasize that, and we're hopeful that the numbers continue to be strong. The good news is, even with the removal of masks, all these statistics are staying pretty steady. We did not see an uptick as a result of removing masks in terms of any in-school transmission. And the cases we've seen the last two weeks have really been spread all across the district in different places, no clusters in a particular classroom or among a particular activity or anything along those lines. So that's a success story that we're very pleased with, and we're hoping even better times are ahead as we head into the spring. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has about this first, and I just want to comment a little bit about mental health before we wrap up the report. But if there are any questions about the COVID statistics, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Sarah. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Certainly a good news story. Data's trending in the right direction. So, and you said you had further comments.
Thank you. You know, and we'll be communicating some additional information and reminders to families in the coming days and weeks. I just do want to mention once again to the school committee and to those watching that we continue to experience a mental health crisis among young people in Shrewsbury, in Massachusetts, across the nation. You know, clearly, this is tied to experiences that students had during the pandemic and the aftermath of that, along with other societal issues that are happening. I don't think anyone can really pinpoint what that is now, but the reality is that we have a lot of students who are in distress. We're very concerned about the health and safety of our students relative to mental health issues. We are going to continue, we've done some good work over the course of the past two school years in terms of a lot of issues relative to reaching out to students, certainly providing different kinds of support. We've added positions to help with support. We're looking to add more for next year, as you know from the budget presentation that we made a few weeks back. But even now, we just need to continue to make sure that we're communicating and partnering with our families, to make sure people are aware of where they can reach out, what to look for, making sure our students know and our families know that if someone is in distress, how to get help. And certainly, we'll be communicating again, information that we have relative to where to seek assistance if you're looking for mental health support or behavioral health support, where to turn to if you have a concern about someone's safety in the National Suicide Hotline, where people can look for immediate assistance, and then how they can connect with our school personnel to make sure that we're aware if there's a situation with a young person that is concerning. We continue to see way too many situations where there are very, very concerning issues with young people's mental health, and that's something that I just want to continue to emphasize, and we will be reaching out and communicating specifically about this again in the coming days. But please, I think my message is, in partnering with us to help keep our children safe, you know, please, asking families to continue to be aware, to continue to try to talk to their children. And And we want to emphasize to our children in the school setting, to make sure that they're connecting with trusted adults in different ways. That there are people to talk to and that there is hope. And that even if when someone is in a very, very difficult place emotionally, there are people to help. And that it's important to try to reach out and get that assistance. So more to come, but I just wanted to again emphasize what a difficult time it is right now for young people in our society. And that we are working very hard and I'm deeply appreciative of the work that our our counseling staff, our school psychologists, our school administrators, our educators, our support staff. Are working tirelessly to try to make sure we're providing the right assistance and the best assistance we can to students. In an environment where outside assistance is very, very hard to come by right now, that's a very difficult reality that we're dealing with as a society. So again, more to come, but I just wanted to emphasize again, if there's a question, if there's a concern, please reach out. And thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Next item on our agenda is, oh, I'm sorry, comments and questions, sorry, Mr. Palich.
Just a comment or two, first of all, I want to thank the superintendent for highlighting the mental health crisis that our district is facing, which, as he noted, is certainly not unique to us. And just to, you know, a note to colleagues that as we have so far, especially in budget workshops, the need to keep this crisis front and center as we're having our budget conversation. The need to provide additional resources to address this crisis. Unfortunately, we are not, as a school district, going to be able to solve this problem on our own. It is very much dependent on what outside resources are available. Having said that, we all know that sometimes this students only resource is in their school. Sometimes the first place where a problem is noticed is in the school. And we are certainly an extremely critical partner in making, making some headway in addressing this crisis. So just a, you know, reminder to my colleagues, which I know nobody needs it, but we need to be keeping this crisis front and center of mind as we have our budget conversations as well.
Absolutely, further comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is under policy, it's a report on charter schools and school choice. Also, will be a public hearing and vote by the committee. Just for background, Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer will provide enrollment and financial information relative to charter schools, school choice, virtual schools and students who are homeschooled in the districts. Their report was enclosed. The school committee is required to hold an annual school choice hearing and vote on whether or not they should, they wish to accept any school choice students from other communities for the upcoming school year. Tonight's public hearing will satisfy the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B. Which requires a public hearing prior to a potential school committee vote to not participate in or to otherwise restrict the provisions of the inter-district school choice program. The committee will vote on whether or not to participate in school choice following this public hearing. So with the report, hand it over to Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins.
Thank you, and I'll just start off by emphasizing that I think this is a good news story. Where certainly there is a, an architecture to public education in Massachusetts that creates choice for families. And those choices are along the lines of inter-district school choice. Where they can choose to enroll in another district that's accepting school choice students, and we can choose to do the same. As we have in a limited way in the past, students can attend charter schools, which are public schools that have different enrollment and. Or they're regulated in terms of their enrollment and their admissions, where families can seek admission. There's priority given to the communities that the schools originally chartered for. And then there are virtual schools, it's also part of something that we've seen some increases in, and Mr. Collins will speak to that. And of course, there's homeschooling, which is something that families take on their own responsibility and they're allowed to do that under the law. As long as they have a plan approved by the local public school district, which is a responsibility that we take very seriously. So kind of among that architecture of choices, Mr. Collins will present some data and information to you this evening to help you make sense of that. And then here, our recommendation, which is not to open any additional school choice seats next year. Do particularly because those students will be able to matriculate through twelfth grade under state law, once they're admitted to the district. And we, while we are in very good shape now, of course, at the elementary level with the opening of the new Beale in terms of space. At the middle and high school level, we still continue to be stretched in terms of space available for the population that we have. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins and look forward to sharing some interesting statistics with you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and I would say, obviously, the topics we're going to cover have been discussed by Dr. Sawyer. This is an important time of year to have this school choice hearing and vote. Because it's this time of year where parents are looking forward to the upcoming school year and educating their children. So we get a lot of inquiries from surrounding communities asking if we're going to have any school choice seats available. So upon your vote, hopefully this evening, then we're able to post this information on our website. And be clear with those inquiries about whether or not there will be any seats. First, I'm just going to kind of go over some of the statistics related to charter school. And this is a curve that you, and a chart that you've seen before. Again, kind of remarking about the good news story, this is a charter school enrollment on a headcount basis going back to nineteen ninety-eight to the present time. And you can see the peak there of one hundred and forty-four Shrewsbury students. Who had opted for charter school education primarily at the Advanced Math and Science Academy in Marlboro. And then since that time, for a variety of reasons, including educational policy decisions and programming decisions. And construction of Sherwood Middle School, that enrollment, so all those actions that you as a school committee in the community took. Many of those students returned to the school district and our enrollment has plummeted now down to just twenty-six children from Shrewsbury attending a charter school. So where do they go primarily, again, to Amsa in Marlboro, twenty-three of them. There are two students attending at the Abby Kelly Foster Charter School in Worcester. And one student at the Learning First Charter School in Worcester, which is formerly the Seven Hills Charter School. With respect to the costs for the community, and these costs are borne by the town of Shrewsbury out of the so-called town budget, not necessarily out of the direct school budget. For each student that opts for this type of education, this is a history going back to fiscal fourteen. Of the tuition charges, which were back then in fiscal fourteen, just over one point one million dollars. Based upon a FTE of a hundred and four students. And now they're down to three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars based upon enrollment of twenty-six students. There is some state aid, just over twenty-four thousand dollars that's provided to Shrewsbury by the state as an offset to these tuition costs. And this is just kind of another calculation that's done to kind of demonstrate that. And then also the fact that we actually should be at full charter school reimbursement per their formula and policy, should be getting fifteen thousand dollars more. But that account has not been fully funded by the state legislature for a number of years. So it's actually lesser than what was intended to be when that reimbursement formula was created by the state. Shifting gears to school choice, this is a chart on school choice history. The blue bar represents students from Shrewsbury who have decided to attend another public school district. Who is accepting school choice children. And you can see the range there, anywhere from nineteen students to current high right now of forty-one. And then the red bar is school choice receiving students. And you can see that there was a time back twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, that the school committee back then decided to allow some students to attend Shrewsbury High School. And then over that four-year period, they graduated, not all of them persisted. And then there was a gap in time with receiving, school choice receiving students. And then back in sixteen seventeen, the school committee voted to allow up to thirty students at the elementary grades. And so what we had in that first initial year of twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, a net after that lottery process, we had twenty-seven students start with us. And at the present time, we're down to twenty-two who have persisted. So a little bit more kind of these next slides, diving into a little bit more depth of details about school choice. And again, the the reason why parents would choose to have their children leave Shrewsbury Public Schools and attend another public school district is a variety of reasons. Whether it be parental employment, because they work in another school district, they might have a preference around the size of school, where their child goes to. Previously, there were a number of parents deciding to send their children to Worcester Public Schools to access full-day kindergarten. That's no longer the case, thankfully, with our school district being able to offer that now, this year, to all kindergarten students. And so there's just a variety of reasons why parents choose to do that. This next chart shows the forty-one sending students by grade level. And you can see that, you know, it's hard to see on the screen, but you have in your report that of the forty-one. Most of them are at the high school grades nine through twelve, seventeen of them are there. Nine are at grades seven and eight, eleven are at grades five and six, and then only four students are at grades K through four. This chart again shows the sending student destination. And you can see we've got, you know, for example, one student attending grade nine in Auburn. We've got three students in Uxbridge, a couple in West Boylston and a few in Worcester. And then the preponderance of the forty-one are attending the Tech Connections Academy Virtual School. So twenty-four of those are attending virtual school through the school choice program. This chart here shows kind of similar to before, the FTE pupils receiving. And then the amount of tuition dollars that the school department received for educating those children. And then on the right, under the red column, is the sending students and then the cost to send students to other school districts. And the traditional cost for public schooling is five thousand dollars. And then if that child has a individual education plan, those school districts can charge for those services as well on top. And our school district is required to pay those. Virtual school enrollment is really a subset of the school choice program. And again, we have twenty-four students enrolled there, the tuition is higher for a virtual school program. It's eighty-eight, just over eighty-eight hundred dollars per student this year. And you can see in this chart here, the kind of history of the virtual school enrollment for the past five years. And with the highest year actually being the current year. And certainly a bump up in the twenty-twenty-one year when our school district, like most others, were in a hybrid educational mode due to the pandemic. In terms of school choice receiving, right now, of the twenty-two students that we have, seventeen actually reside in Worcester. One from Wachusett, two in Boylston, one in Grafton, one in Milbury, you can see the grade levels there where they are now. So three out of the four grades are at the high school level. And the one cohort is still at grade seven. And we expect this year to receive just over one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in school choice revenue. Switching to home, homeschool students. This chart displays certainly the pandemic effects of the hybrid model in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. When homeschooling went up to fifty children, this year it's gone down, down to thirty-three. And we'll have to just see what happens for years going forward, but you can see the three prior years. It had been kind of slightly climbing a little bit each of those years. So kind of some summary notes, certainly a good news story about charter school enrollment declining. And in terms of school choice, the sending enrollment has increased. And especially in that subset of the virtual school enrollment since COVID-nineteen onset. Again, as Dr. Sawyer referenced at the beginning, the school committee must vote every year, whether or not to accept school choice children into Shrewsbury. And if the school district does not take a vote, then it's automatically required to accept children by default. So it's very important to have this annual hearing and take an affirmative vote either way. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned, the recommendation for the upcoming year is to not open up any new seats due to space limitations at the upper grade levels. Again, once you allow students in, they are eligible to retain enrollment up through grade twelve graduation. And I guess at this point, I would, happy to answer any questions you might have. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned at the very beginning, you know, this is a public policy decision to have both charter schools and the school, inter-district school choice program. With the philosophy of creating a competitive environment, kind of raises all boats, if you will, in terms of retaining competitive educational environment. And, you know, to that end, of course, just like any other kind of enterprise, it's to our own interest to maintain a high-quality school district. And invest in that to maintain that quality and retain our students. You know, just from a purely financial perspective, you know, that is, you know, the kind of least costly way to educate our children. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, colleagues, comments, questions, Ms. Fritz?
I just a comment, I think it's always important that families have choice because there's very need. So I'm, you know, glad that that is available, but we have to look at both sides of that as a school board as well. And a question around the whole state reimbursement for the charter schools, I remember back in fourteen when we were looking at when we would get to the full, you know. Is there any talk about when that may happen and the state's finances seem better this year? So do you think that's something that could happen?
You know, I, to your point, I think it's a possibility, I haven't heard anything really specifically about it. But it does always come up in terms of this time of year when they're preparing their budgets. And I know there's been lots of advocacy from organizations like MASC and Mass Association of School Superintendents for legislators to do that. But I don't have anything specific right now that would lend hope to that.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. McGee?
So I have a few questions about homeschooling and virtual schools, just, just technical things. Are the homeschooled students, do they take MCAS? Do they in some way, do they, do we give them a high school diploma? How does that work if they go the whole distance with homeschooling?
Sure, I might defer first to Dr. Sawyer and then maybe Mrs. Clouder, if she would.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I can hear. The essentially homeschool students are not enrolled in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. They're not eligible to take MCAS with the state. They're also by school committee policy not eligible to participate in anything that the school district provides. So it's not an a la carte situation, for example, so occasionally I'll get an inquiry from a homeschool family. If their child can participate in an inters班级 athletics, for example, or in the school musical. And the answer to that is no, because the, by policy, those students have, are, just like a student who attends a private school, is not enrolled in our school district. We have no authority over the child.
Right.
And therefore, that's been the policy for a very long time with the school department.
I, I guess, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but if you want to ask about homeschool, I was going to talk about.
Well, the homeschool piece is just, I'm curious, I can imagine that they could take SATs and in some other way. Verify their, their education and get into college. But if they did not progress to college, then are you, is there any other credential they could get? Are these people not considered high school graduates?
They're not considered high school graduates, I think colleges, admissions programs are familiar with students who have done a homeschooling type piece. Some of, some students will participate, there are some online services that provide resources and curriculum to homeschool families. And may give them some sort of certificate of completion or different evidence that they've completed certain coursework. So it really can vary from, from family to family, how they choose to approach it. But essentially, colleges are looking for some sort of alternative means. You know, SATs or ACTs are not limited to by a certain school, some schools will host them as a convenience, but that's really all done through the. Some schools will host them as a, as a convenience, but that's really all done through the college board. Same thing as AP courses, students can self-study advanced placement AP courses as well. So that's another option they might have. But there definitely has been somewhat of an industry that's grown up around homeschooling in the last decade plus, with lots of online resources. And I think that during the pandemic, you know, there were certainly families who chose to move in that direction. I think there, there are some who this year were still nervous about being in person and because we were not providing an alternative, chose the homeschool route. We made families aware that essentially was, you know, their choice if they were not going to attend school in person this year in Shrewsbury Public Schools. Their only real option for any kind of virtual situation was to apply for the Tech Academy or Greenfield, also an academy, the, the approved state online schools to homeschool or to matriculate at a private school.
So if they bail out of homeschooling at some point, if they take three or four years at home and then decide to re-enter the schools, how do you understand where to put them in?
Sure. I, I'll defer to Ms. Clouder because she's responsible for working with families. And she's also, just before she comments, the, under the, the school committee's policy and under state law, local school districts have to approve the family's homeschool plan each year, so that there is some oversight, that there is some, you know, that, that's, to be very frank, it is, there's not a lot of authority the school district has in terms of making judgments about the quality of a plan or whatnot, you know, but there are, we are able to, to ask for, you know, certain elements to be present, and then there to report, a progress report at the end of each year. And Ms. Clouder is responsible for that. So I'll, I'll turn it over to her in terms of how, because we do have students re-enter certainly from time to time.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think that you hit the nail on the head in terms of the, the law requires me to look at the components of a plan. There's a, certain things that I can ask questions about, what's the schedule? What are the materials you'll be using? What are the resources that you plan on? And we've, you know, by virtue of having remote learning, encouraged families who are, you know, planning on re-enrolling with us, but were concerned about their health or the health of a family member to access some of the remote plans as part of those materials so that those kids would be experiencing something similar when they transitioned back in with us. But we've seen certainly an, an uptick in kids who are rejoining after being out for longer than just a, you know, a partial year or more than one year. And it's a bigger dilemma when they're in grade eight and above, because essentially the record that, of the student learning that the family prevent, presents for us is the, is their CUM record. And the high school has called me about several kids to say, but I'm not sure where to place them. This doesn't tell me, you know, kind of whether they're ready for calculus or not. And so we've had to kind of think about how would we administer some of our own assessments to appropriately place students? And it's a matter of getting to know the student in, in some cases, administering some additional assessments to figure that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, comments? Severn?
Yeah, um, on the virtual school, I, I guess we all feel like we've become familiar with virtual learning. I'm just sort of surprised to see that the numbers prior to the pandemic were frankly as high as they were. And, and so clearly this has been an option around for a long time for some segment of the population. But I was also intrigued, I appreciate the data, because it looked as though there was quite a number at, at the sort of elementary and lower middle level. And I'm just trying to understand what, sort of what we think that, that attraction is about. And, you know, I started, my, my brain started to make assumptions, like, oh, our kids may be having longer-term illnesses, and this is one way to help them kind of engage in curriculum in some sort of non-traditional setting versus maybe thinking, I sort of had heard about younger, you know, older, older maybe high school kids having some mental health issues and feeling like being in a virtual setting was sort of a little helpful for issues of anxiety. But at first grade level, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we think. Back to your point, Mr. Collins, that we would like kids in the school because we think we're providing them sort of a comprehensive set. And so what we think might be attracting that many folks, assuming this is relatively an appropriate sample that's not totally skewed by the pandemic, even if the numbers are a little bit high. Do we have any sense of what, what makes a parent want to enroll, go that route?
One thing I would say before Ms. Clouder comments is, I, I will say that this population tends to be somewhat transient. So, you know, this is a snapshot in time of basically last fall for this school year. And I would place a fair bet that by the time we get to the end of the school year, it's going to look differently, meaning that there's, the pattern has, that we have seen is that there are a number of families that will try virtual school and might persist for a few months and then pull out of it. So it's, it's not a real stable population overall to begin with. But with that, I'd have some other.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I, I think there's also real diversity in the, the families making this choice. So there are some families that homeschool for religious reasons. There are some families that homeschool because I, you know, spent some time with a young woman who was convinced that she was going to be an influencer on TikTok, and she thought that going to an online school would emphasize her strengths and help her prepare to do that really well. And so I, I think there are some kids who are school phobic or have had discipline and/or challenging relationships with administrators in previous schools. And so that we only hear about them or meet them when they apply to homeschool and then they go to the virtual piece. They've, they've not been in our schools when they're making the choice. I think that's an important thing to, to note. But the numbers have grown to the point where we now have a spreadsheet to kind of manage the communication and to make sure, like, do we have a plan? Was the plan approved? Do we have evidence of the learning at the end of the year? Who hasn't come to pick up the portfolios they've submitted? Who still owes us a portfolio? And I don't remember having to do that degree of active monitoring in conjunction with, you know, the registrar when I started in the position. So I, I think it's a really good question. I think there are lots of different answers to that question, but it, it's hard to give you just one answer.
Right. So it sounds as though, sort of, are we conflating a little bit, individuals who are homeschooling versus individuals where this is a sending district? Because we're paying tuition for these, these.
The virtual students.
For our virtual students, whereas homeschool kiddos are being removed from the district. They're to this point, they're not our.
Students enrolled in Tech Connections are enrolled in that school as a public school.
Okay.
And they're under their auspices and rules and regulations. And we are paying, there's money that comes out of our allotment of state aid for schools and gets diverted, just like a charter school.
Okay.
To Tech, or, or a, or a, like a school choice gets diverted directly to, in this case, Tech Connections Academy. There are two approved virtual schools in the state, approved by Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education. Tech Connections is one of them. The other is run by the Greenfield Public Schools. It's like Greenfield Online Academy or something along those lines. These go back over a decade now in terms of when they were established by Massachusetts law. They're still the only two that I'm aware of at this point that are approved under mass law, where the, the funding goes that way. There are also other virtual schools that exist online that families who homeschool, which is a separate issue as you mentioned, do matriculate at, and that is their plan. But Ms. Clouder would have to approve that plan as well. If they're, if they're enrolled in Tech Academy, they're not considered homeschool students and we don't have to approve.
Got it. And thank you for that clarity. Can I ask just one final question?
What I meant was that students wanted, who stay home, they have different reasons for doing that. And some stay home with a homeschool plan, and some stay home and do virtual schooling.
No, I understand, I understand. Thank you for both the clarity and I understand how they conflate to some degree about why they may be choosing a different, a different sort of placement than, than we might traditionally hope for, for some students. Just as to the, the statute itself, I completely appreciate that, should we admit students, we have to keep them sort of through, in terms of school choice, we have to keep them through graduation or presumably they're taking a choice to no longer be with us. But I guess I was also a little surprised when you shared some of the data from, call it a, a decade or so ago when we admitted students, that we made a choice to admit students, but maybe only at the high school level? So we could make a choice to admit, not necessarily saying K to twelve is open, but we, we would have that flexibility if we wanted to. Is that?
Great question. And, and yes, that's exactly what you can do, is you, as a school committee, can open up just select grade levels and only a certain number of seats. And so, you know, just looking at this chart, these students who are currently enrolled as school choice students, which, of which we have twenty-two, they're now in grades seven, nine, ten, and eleven. And it was, I guess, five years ago that the school committee then decided to open up those seats for grades two, four, five, and six, and open up a certain different, different number of them, seats for each of those grade levels based upon our enrollment at that time.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And I, I'm, I'm guessing that some of the focus, particularly on the high school level, in addition to keeping them all the way through, where we as a district are currently seeing a lot of spacing pressure is at the high school level. So should, once, once they're in, they're with us as long as they want to be, but it is at our high school level where we're currently sort of pinched for, for space. So seems an important extra point. Thank you for the clarity.
And now at the middle school level, we are crowded there to true work in high school.
Further questions and comments? Okay. Another data point I think is really significant around charter schools, always, you know, starting seven years ago on the board, learning about the impact that charter school tuitions can have on our budget. And seeing that number at a peak of a hundred and forty-four students in 2010, decreased by eighty-two percent over twelve years, is pretty significant when you consider twenty-six charter school students today are costing the district about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So you think about, you know, about one point six million in savings, which is, is pretty remarkable. So, but, but yeah, thank you for the report. Any further comments before I open the public hearing? Okay, so we'll open the public hearing for school choice. Is there anybody here tonight that wishes to speak regarding school choice? Once, anybody? Okay, I think we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. So as we mentioned at the beginning of this agenda item, this will require a school committee vote. And I will need a motion that the school committee vote to not participate in inter-district school choice for the 2022, 2023 school year. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda. Just get all the way down here. Okay, the next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a report on curriculum and technology budgets. Report will provide an overview of the current FY22 curriculum information technology and instructional technology budgets and present proposals for those budgets for FY2023. Here to present the report today is our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Ms. Amy Clouder, our Director of Information Technology, Brian LaRue, and Shawna Powers, who's our Director of Instructional Technology and Media Services. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to share information about the curriculum and technology budgets. It's been some time since we presented together. A few things have been happening since March of 2019, and we're glad to get back into a rhythm of planning that's a little bit more typical. So our goal tonight is to share with you an overview of the planning and priorities that are referenced in our FY23 budget and to give you a chance to ask some questions about the report as well. Brian, who is the Director of Information Technology, is going to focus on hardware systems and related staff that support our technology infrastructure. Shawna's area of expertise is how we use digital tools to advance teaching and learning. But I'm going to kick us off with focusing on the cost drivers for curriculum instruction and assessment. So just for people watching at home, budget planning is kind of like planning for tiers of instruction. There are some things that we know everyone will need every year, and those are baked into the budget. And then there are other things that are specific to some groups or levels or needs. And typically, we have a cycle for purchasing materials and replacing equipment and other resources like subscriptions or memberships. And purchasing new materials happens when we're trying to stay in compliance or providing an equitable experience for students. So in reflecting on kind of what's happened since the last time we presented, I'm really proud that we kept those priorities in mind with our pandemic purchases as well. And finally, our budgets also support educator efforts to innovate using new materials or technology or methods, and so you'll hear us talk a little bit about that tonight. So we have a slide from the Wayback Machine. This is something that we presented in 2019, and I just thought it was really interesting when I was looking back at the last presentation, because we used this slide to show what needs we were anticipating for 2020. And, you know, we said that our success would be a manner of planning backward from strategic priorities, and we certainly didn't get a chance to plan backward. We were hit with that kind of outside factor. And budgets also have to respond to that. Our plans shifted, but our priorities were helpful guide in making decisions. And you can see here, most of the things on that list were kind of accelerated by the investments that we made. So we've seen some growth as a result of the challenges that we faced in the pandemic. For example, expanding the iPad use beyond grade three was just an idea at that point. And having a one-to-one model K to four has not only helped us to further both learning and equity goals, but expanding the use of devices from school to home has also made possible some connections that we didn't have previously. And the equity in those connections is also important. So when we think about the curriculum budget, the motto empowering learners is inclusive of adult learners as well as student learners. And so in addition to funding curriculum materials for students, the curriculum instruction and assessment budget provides resources for staff and professional development for staff are, is built to mirror kind of what we value and expect in student learning experiences. So you see here, our students in Patton School leading the announcements, which I think is a great example of student voice and choice, some features of project-based learning that we're trying to promote. You see Coach Lindsay Morris in a Floral Street kindergarten classroom. Kindergarten is new to Floral Street. And so working with staff to kind of anticipate and respond to the needs of young learners in their building is something that's been a chief contribution of her this year. And then the right hand, you see Emily Shaves and Shannon Hines, who are two Beal teachers who stepped into teacher leadership positions to help their colleagues better understand how to use and make effective connections with CSO, which is the equivalent at the elementary level of Schoology in the upper grades. We needed something that was going to be user-friendly and helpful in terms of posting educational plans, but CSO is a tool that also has the potential to help us create kind of a portfolio of student work that can travel with students across grades. And so it's a nice example of something that has been an added bonus from something that we invested in kind of under the gun as part of the pandemic. So this year, professional learning will connect with department initiatives as well. And I thought it was helpful to include another example. You've heard a presentation from Ken Almeida about the exciting work that educators in the World Language Department are doing, the new standards emphasizing oral proficiency, which means that we want students to really apply their language in context and use it, has really shifted kind of their approach to curriculum. And so we start by unpacking the standards. And this slide kind of for me illustrates that some change that we plan for is slow change. So it's one thing to be familiar with the new standards, it's another thing to kind of think about, well, how do I shift my practice in the classroom to really promote oral proficiency? And then how does my assessment routines change to really grade students on oral proficiency as opposed to vocabulary, say, or terminology? Or, you know, I, I took a lot of French and I can read it, but it's a different thing to be plunked down in Paris and have to order something, right? So I think when you think about that, it's really an exciting change, but it's not an easy change. And so departments that need time to address new standards also have professional development needs that are supported in the budget. So there are new standards for the performing and visual arts. Math at the middle level has been engaging in professional development to respond to their curriculum needs. And how we fit these needs into the puzzle in terms of district PD is, is like putting together different pieces into a whole. On that note, when I'm putting together the plan for district PD, I'm thinking about the needs of both buildings, departments, and the district as, as an entity together. And so I collaborate with the Professional Development Committee, which has representation from all levels and both administrators and educators. And this year, we began a three-year cycle focused on using the district early release days to further learning that supports strategic goals in three areas. So we identified universal design for learning to further our work with multi-tiered systems of support, diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity to match our district goals in that area. And then department PD, which is leaving space for departments to respond to needs like the World Language Department. So over the course of the next two years, every professional educator will complete an equitable educator course, one of three UDL courses, and then have an opportunity to work collaboratively with colleagues on department-based needs. And so fortunately, the proposed budget will help meet both student needs and professional development learning needs for staff. And I couldn't help this because the child in the, in the photograph is just looks so happy, and so was I when I saw these numbers. You know, in our budget situation in past, if we You know, in our budget situation in past, if we have to choose between cutting people and cutting things, we've cut things and I've been glad to do it. But this budget reflects kind of a shift in that so that we will have some more resources in the curriculum and instruction department to kind of think about how we support that. So grateful for your support and advocacy and students like this student in the foundations of art class at the high school. Will have more resources to support some innovative approaches to inclusion as a result of that. So I want to applaud the Visual Arts Department and Pamela Blank, who provided that photograph. That comes from a foundational class that's new. And I think Meg Belcito and her department has led the way with kind of unified approach. And we're trying to think about, so what are the learning opportunities that also reflect that unified approach? So we are funding from grants also supports our budget. And you're familiar with how the elementary and secondary schools Emergency Relief Fund or ESER helped us to pivot during the pandemic. And similarly, there's four federal grants that support general ed, teaching and learning. Title one and title three are targeted to specific student populations. On the one hand, economically disadvantaged students and on the other, English learning acquisition and academic achievement for English learners. But Title two and four have been used to explore new learning opportunities for either staff or for students. And although allocations have been fairly stable, increasing costs in some of our end mean that we're seeking grants elsewhere when it comes to the innovation aspect of our budget. For example, the Title Two Grant Supporting Effective Instruction, which is really about teacher professional learning. The entire allocation of the grant last year, sixty-five thousand nine hundred and six went to induction and mentoring this year. And an additional thirty thousand or twelve percent of my budget was funded through the, had to fund the remainder. So when we think about mentoring, that's an important kind of professional learning and development. And it's, in some ways, the grant funds that used to cover that are increasingly eating into the other aspects of the budget. And the Title Four Grant, which supports academic enrichment, was used entirely to cover updated social studies texts for grade three. So although we get some grant funding, I just want to be transparent that it's not sufficient to kind of cover our needs. And certainly not sufficient to explore kind of new innovative approaches. This next slide shows kind of the pie of the curriculum instruction budget. There's roughly divided into nine slices or spending categories. Mentoring stipends, which I just mentioned, conference registration, which you can see is very small. We've been really helped by Zoom and online learning opportunities and attending fewer in-person conferences. Professional development contractual services has to do with when we have Dr. Darnisa Amante come and speak to the staff, for example, as a keynote. Other presenters that prepare, micro courses for us are covered in that category. Travel professional development, very small dues and memberships to things like ASCD or the Marshall Memo, which is a regular newsletter that highlights teaching and learning. Curriculum development stipends are for summer work in things like the math department when they're looking to expand their curriculum or world language. Working on how they might adjust assessments to reflect the new standards. Textbooks and instructional equipment, I think the piece there is to just highlight that it's more than textbooks now. When we think about instructional equipment, we're also often thinking about software tools that support students in the classroom. And educational supplies is all the stuff that's not textbooks or equipment, but that is really important. And so on that note, as we work to honor the diversity in our schools, our teachers really need updated resources that are aligned with the standards. And they also need tools that kind of help them differentiate instruction. And so we're really grateful to see curriculum and technology working together. And Brian is the person who really thinks about how the systems of those, the backend of all of that works to try to protect student information. And also help information flow across different platforms. So Brian's going to talk a little bit about the aspect of his budget that relates to the curriculum piece.
Thank you. So just to give a quick overview of the IT budget, there are a few different categories that are part of it. Hardware obviously includes things like iPads, computers, that kind of thing. Software includes our iPad computer management software. Software from Adobe Boardmaker, which is used for special education applications, things like that. Data processing includes items like Power School for our district-wide data management, School Messenger, our nursing software. So district-wide databases basically and services that are involved there. Internet access, we're fortunate to have a relationship with SOCO where they are excellent providing that for us. As well as servers, switches and Wi-Fi access points, AV equipment and repair and maintenance for those above items. There are some additional items that aren't necessarily in the IT budget, things like building security, cameras, key fob, systems, that kind of thing. And believe it or not, at the new Beal school, even the clocks are kind of in our area now, so.
You really do do it all.
It's a team effort for sure. So, you know, as over the past few years with all the trials that COVID has thrown our way. We are, we are ahead in a few areas as a result of it. One obviously is the K to four expansion of iPads into the one-to-one program. We were able to use one-time funding, both COVID grant funding and funding for the appropriate budget. As well as the timing worked out really well with the Beal Building Project where we were able to, the timing was early enough that we were able to shift our approach at Beal to be one-to-one there as well. And that helped us leverage funding from that project as well. So that helped out there. There are a couple of other areas where we were able to leverage purchases made during COVID. One was for laptops. We needed to purchase some laptops for COVID testing. As well as to facilitate physical distancing in the computer labs. We needed to convert some of them to laptops so furniture could be moved and areas in the labs there. So when we made those purchases, we wanted to make sure that we were being thoughtful and being able to use those after the fact if we needed to. And once things wound down with physical distancing and that kind of thing, we were able to shift those to staff laptop upgrades. So that helped us kind of get ahead in our cycle of replacements for staff laptops. If you've been in elementary classrooms and Sherwood classrooms, you'll have noticed that the projectors are wall-mounted and they project onto the whiteboards. But that's something that we haven't been able to have really at Oak and the high school for the most part. So we've been working on installing those at those two buildings. Supply chain issues have hampered their efforts there a little bit. But we anticipate by the end of the summer that all of our classrooms have short throw projectors. Right now, in those classrooms, there are projectors on carts, which it works, but it takes up valuable classroom space. And it prevents us from having more easy standardization for when teachers are traveling between classes. With this kind of setup with the short throw, they can just move from class to class and they know what to expect in each room. And finally, computer labs, there were some areas where computer labs had become more out of date and unable to run the latest software. So we were able to use some funding to upgrade those and those are in process as well right now. In addition to items, we've been able to add IT staff as well, thanks to your support, which is greatly appreciated. One of the first things we did was added additional building-based IT staff. This graph here shows kind of the number of tickets over the past three and a half years. And you can see that there are a couple spikes, obviously, at the start of last school year with remote learning. But we also see that this is continuing this year with higher volumes, obviously with, as a result of K to four, one-to-one. During remote and hybrid learning, teachers developed many new skills for, with teaching and technology. And a lot of content was digitized during COVID and continues to be used. So with their return to full in-person learning, we did see an increased need for projectors and technology support in general in all learning spaces. And the additional staff that we've added has helped us to decrease response times, which is important. You know, as teachers take the leap to using technology in innovative and effective ways, we want to make sure that we're able to support them quickly in the moment when they need the help. Over the past few years, we've noticed that the number of internal outside events has increased. But also projectors are a mission-critical function for teachers. And when the projector's not working, you know, it really throws their lesson plans for a loop. So we want to make sure that we're able to support them. So we were able to add an additional AV support technician. In addition to supporting projectors and that kind of thing. Our current AV technician, Craig Marsault, when he was first hired, a significant portion of his job was supporting the educational television studio. And over the years, as projectors and other AV needs have increased, that's kind of crowded out the available time that he has to support ETS. So adding this position, in addition to helping increase our service for those needs, will also allow him to focus more on ETS as well. And finally, we were able to add a new data specialist position. This is a position that Ms. Clouder has been advocating for a long time. And curriculum teams have been working with data and have been highly engaged, but they've needed assistance more efficiently and effectively analyzing the data. So this position would be help working with them to help gain insights and get more meaningful and actionable analysis of student performance data. In addition to that, this position is also taking on the state personnel data reporting functionality, which will provide some relief to the HR department as well. They had previously handled that function. So I'll turn it back to Ms. Clouder now to talk about some of our tools.
Thanks, Brian. So I put up these icons because these are some of the powerful tools we've invested in recently. And I don't think that we talked about many of them in previous presentations. I think the ongoing support of coaches, coordinators and directors helps shift practice. But I think when we're looking just at these tools, you get a sense of the number of things people have become familiar with in terms of their practice. So Zoom, obviously, I think everyone's familiar with that, but it continues to be a really helpful tool to foster conversations. When we were, for example, interviewing for the data specialist in the first round, it was really helpful to get everybody aboard cross schools and be able to target our interview questions. When teams who are teaching at various schools but at the same grade level want to collaborate, it's an easy way to have a meeting. And our CSOW specialist leaders have increasingly relied on Zoom to kind of plan out what PD looks like without having to leave their buildings. Which maximizes the time they have with students, but also gives them what they need to be able to deliver consistent support to staff. So CSOW, as you know, is the elementary equivalent of Schoology, but it has some functionality for students to create portfolios that we're very interested in growing in coming years. GG, the Penguin and Freckle represent kind of differentiated skills practice for students in math and/or math and reading. For students in K to four on the one hand and K to eight in terms of Freckle. Lion Bridge is the resource that nurses have been using to reach families and be able to easily communicate with them when there's translation challenges. And Talking Points is a piece that our English learner teachers and many educators across the district, including our nurses, have used because it's a translatable text feature. So families that we've had a hard time reaching with paper communications or even school messages, often their preferred mode of communicating is by text. Because that's the most helpful device for them and Talking Points allows us to kind of reach some people that are hard to reach. But all of those things take some time to learn. Some of them are intuitive and it doesn't take much time. But thinking about how you're going to have nuanced communication and how that might shift is important. And I think these investments will be best realized if we invest some time in really thinking about how we're going to use them consistently. And now as things are kind of returning more to new normal, I'm hoping we have some bandwidth to think about some of those things in place. It's also, you know, it's one thing to have extra tools, but in terms of shifting practice, this is just my opportunity to give a shout out to all of the people who support the change in practice. And so that includes the directors and coordinators and coaches that I supervise. But I also co-plan and support with other powerful people like Meg Belcito and the Student Support Department. Other directors like Noel Freeman, Angie, who's at the School Counseling Director at the high school. The special ed directors at each level, from Jackie Marcello to Patty Waterhouse to Megan Zileon and Kristen. But also Brian and Shawna, who contribute to our collective capacity. Job-embedded PD, that day-to-day learning that we do when we're in the moment and trying to solve a problem or do something better, is also really important and effective to acknowledge. So there's the planned for PD and training, and then there's some of the things that happen on the fly, thanks to the good work of the team. And I really want to make sure I acknowledge that and introduce Shawna in that capacity, who is really thoughtful about not only the use of the tools and which ones we choose. But has helped build a vision of how technology and learning can intersect.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
So one of the highlights for me of the pandemic was that we finally were able to purchase CSOW. So CSOW was a tool that I was really excited about from the first time I saw it because I definitely saw the potential and the ease of use. So in the spring of two thousand and twenty, we did purchase a subscription to CSOW for all pre-K to four classes. And Amy shared a little bit about it already. But so it enables teachers to really easily share information with families. And it also enables students to choose work that they want to put into their portfolios that then, once their teacher approves it, their parents and other family members can see the work. They can like the work, they can comment on the work. And it's pretty cool because it's in real time. So if a student uploads something to their portfolio, you know, during their reading block in the morning, they might see a comment on it before they even get back home after school, which is really pretty fun. Teachers report that families are very engaged with CSOW. And you can see the current CSOW usage just this past week. At the K to four level, it's really high. We have a lot of students uploading work. We have a lot of families visiting. We have a lot of comments and likes. So it's really encouraging families to really take a closer look at what their kids are doing at school. Another tool that I was very excited to be able to bring on board is Sora. So Sora is an app that provides students with easy access to eBooks and audiobooks. As I'm sure you are aware, during remote and hybrid learning, it was difficult for students to be able to access hard copies of library books. So that was really the motivation for us to purchase Sora. So students can read eBooks or they can listen to audiobooks through Sora. Super user-friendly and kids can borrow up to three books at a time. So media center staff introduced students to this tool and it quickly became very, very popular. So popular that Shrewsbury Public Schools consistently has the highest usage in the entire state of Massachusetts. While it was extremely helpful during remote and hybrid learning, it's still very useful during in-person learning for a variety of reasons. One is that students can access books that we don't have physical copies of in our media center. So it increases our collection quite a bit. It's also helpful because it enables teachers and students to meet their individual needs. So one thing is that, let's say, you're a student who's in fifth or sixth grade, but you're reading at a much higher or a much lower reading level. So Sora enables you to access those books that are just right for you, where our physical collection is most likely to have books, you know, within a closer range. So that part is really helpful. Additionally, students can choose how they want the text to appear. So they can have like a higher contrast or a different font, or there's even a dyslexic font for those who might need that. So that's been super helpful. One thing that happened recently is in sixth grade, Ms. Goudreau's class had learned a little bit about Anne Frank. And most students hadn't heard about her before and were very interested when they found out that there was a book about her. But not surprisingly, we didn't have a full class set of the diary of a young girl. And so Mrs. Clegg, the media specialist over at Sherwood, was able to very easily access a class set of eBooks for those students so that they could access them very quickly. So that's been a super, super helpful tool that we're so excited that we have gotten to continue to have access to. Additionally, when we expanded our one-to-one program to include grades K to four, we also expanded our digital citizenship and information literacy curriculum. Historically, over the years, as we brought iPads into classrooms, as we brought iPads into lower-grade classrooms, we started teaching these lessons in those classrooms. So for example, when we went one to two, one iPad per every two students at the fourth grade level, we brought in digital citizenship lessons to go along with that to teach. we brought in digital citizenship lessons to go along with that, to teach students how to appropriately use their technology. And then when we brought it down to grade three, we brought the lessons down to grade three. So now that we're one-to-one at all grade levels, these lessons are an integral part of our instruction. So at the K to four level, students currently receive digital citizenship lessons and information literacy instruction in media classes. And we use a lot of resources from Common Sense Media, which is a very helpful resource. The lesson topics are varied, but they're all extremely relevant to students' daily lives. So the topics include media balance and well-being, privacy and security, digital footprint and identity, relationships and communication, cyberbullying, digital drama and hate speech, and news and media literacy. And those same content areas are addressed from the K level to the 12 level, obviously differently. But the concepts start to be developed at the very young grades and continue all the way up through high school. So classroom teachers are reinforcing these concepts in the context of their instruction at all grade levels. Here's a little fun for you to see. For several years now, we have been celebrating Computer Science Education Week. So this is an annual event. It's an international event that takes place in December. And it's a really great opportunity to introduce students to coding. So in our elementary media classes, students explore coding with a variety of tools. On the left, you can see some students who are exploring with a Code and Go robot mouse. And then on the right, students are exploring with a Dash robot. So this really helps kids to get excited about coding and start to see the potential. And then, when students come up to the high school, they do have the option of taking a one semester web design course. So pictured here are two students from Mr. Andreola's class who are excited to make their first web pages in class. So Dominic on the left, he made a webpage on colleges. While Tony on the right made a webpage for all his music playlists that he then added to his personal computer. You see him with a laptop that actually is a laptop that he brought in from home so that he could go ahead and use that himself. So the learning that begins in the elementary level can continue all the way up through the high school where students are actually designing their own web pages.
So we're proud of what our educators have accomplished, and I hope you can hear that in the things that we've described. I also want to acknowledge that even as we've grown our practice, there's still some important initiatives that were in the works when the pandemic hit that we need to restart. One, like the STEAM vision. So I'm very grateful that we have lessons in STEAM that live in our media centers at the elementary level. But we had been planning with a cross-district team on thinking about how we might have pathways that extend to the high school starting sooner, and we need to restart that work. But top of mind for me, of course, right now, particularly in light of some of the mental health concerns we're hearing, is landing on a homework policy that also touches on some of the guidelines for software use that we've talked about. So that's been a powerful shift in terms of differentiating practice. But there's a natural tension between how much screen time is helpful and also being able to provide targeted skill support using some of those devices. So I just wanted to say that as we think about how we are going to spend our resources, and those resources are kind of finite materials, but also time, I'm really grateful that we have our strategic priorities as a guide because our first focus is really student success. And that's fueled by staff that feel empowered to kind of meet the needs of our students. I really appreciate the opportunity to explain kind of how these things go together. But more importantly, your support in helping us to build capacity because it's exciting to think about the possibilities ahead.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions or comments?
First, a huge thank you. I mean, we haven't seen you since 2019 and then COVID happened. And I think it highlighted for all of us what the needs of IT, work, school. And I know for myself, I was chair and I use Teams at work. Oh, my God, we're going to use Zoom. Brian was beyond helpful with everything. I would sign on early. He knew that, and he would always be there. He knew that I was signing on because we'd be ready for our meetings. So a huge thank you to the IT department for me as a school committee member and I think for our district. I think we were positioned well, thank goodness, going into COVID so that we could pivot and change quickly. But I'm sure the work behind the scenes was immense. So again, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done through COVID. And one question I do have, well, also people, tools. We have the right tools, we also have staff. Because if you have an issue, if your device isn't working or up to the capacity you need, or if you don't have staff who can help, I think we've got everything. So again, thank you. My one question I have, I think we're in a good place now. We're moving forward. We have tools, we have staff, we're looking at new things. As we look at this year's budget and then going forward, is there anything that you don't have in this year's budget that you still think you may need? I know a few years ago, it was a subscription. I think it was a subscription we couldn't even pay for. We didn't think we'd be able to get it pre-override. So is there anything this year or even going into the next few years that you think we should be looking at for our budget?
I'd say we're in pretty good shape. We do have in our proposed budget request some additional funding for additional staff laptops just to make sure that we're staying on that cycle. I think for us right now, a lot of it's just working on finding equilibrium in terms of coming out of COVID. Where, you know, with the additional staff that we have, the additional technology, we're just trying to make sure that we're right, you know, hitting the right notes in terms of how we're supporting things. So in general, I'd say we're in a good position.
That's good to hear. I think, you know, it's so important. IT is, we need it, and we're moving. COVID helped us probably move faster than we might have wanted to. But I think now we're in a really good place going forward. So thank you again.
Can I, is it okay if I add something?
Sure.
One thing that I think is important to note is that over time, we have lost computer labs. So that is something that I see as a need. It's difficult because space is also obviously part of that. But I think it's really fantastic that we're one-to-one with iPads. But iPads aren't computers. So I think it's really important for our students to be getting some experiences where they're using actual computers, to see the difference between the functionality, to understand, you know, file, how to manage your files and things along those lines, even just simple tasks that are just different on a computer than they are on an iPad. So I would say whether it would be computer labs or if computer labs aren't possible because of space constraints, then potentially, you know, laptops on carts or something along those lines.
Great. Thank you. Good point. Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for all of the information and all the work that you do. I would certainly echo the words of Ms. Fritz. It's just, you've been phenomenal support to a lot of us. And if I call out just a couple of things, I am beyond pleased that we're in a position where your budget is more than doubling for some of the things that we need, right? And they're not outlandish, they're not ridiculous, they're not over the top. They are the things that we need to be the district that we want to be. And so particularly happy to see how clearly your professional development goals that your committee has called out really align with all the conversations we've been having lately in this room about supporting young people's emotional and mental health and the tiered system of supports. Obviously, the DEI work that we know we continue to need. And then knowing that individual departments want time to work on their individual departmental goals. Those just, it just feels like spot on. And it's good to have goals and be clear about them because I know that's precious time. And so figuring out how to well use it. Ms. LaRue, I have to say, I looked at those ticket submissions and 3,100 nearly tickets in September 2020. I'm pretty sure I'm at least three of them in my family. And so, but knowing that the amount of support that was required by students, by parents at a level that we would have never seen before, and then, of course, by our educators, is just in so many ways sort of Herculean. And the different ways that we've sort of managed as a district to augment the staff that you have, I think are going to pay a lot of dividends for us, even as we come out of the sort of the pandemic craziness, we all hope. But the things like a data specialist for the district just seems so important. It's finally fulfilling a goal. From McCollum's Center Report, which was before I was on the school committee, I want to say 2018 or 2019, saying that that was an important area. So here we are, finally. Took a few years, but like ready to invest in that. And so, again, just feeling like the dividends are there. And I do just want to sort of acknowledge, that's a lot of change in a couple of years, particularly for our educators. And sort of when I see the smattering of all the different names of like, oh, I had to learn a bunch of those, but I didn't have to learn all of them as a parent. But we have educators who are trying to figure out each and every one of those. And so really just want to appreciate our faculty across the board who've stepped up in all sorts of different ways and I'm sure have put in an incredible amount of time to kind of learn all of these things, both in professional settings and in that informal. And sometimes maybe asking their children for help, that's worked out well in my house, to figure out kind of how to move these things forward. But when we then layer on, you know, supports for families around the language assistance and some of those particular pieces of technology. I will tell you, my daughter goes nowhere without her school iPad because of Sora and because it has her books on it. It's with her trip to the grocery store, hold on, I gotta bring my iPad because she's on it. And seeing some of the ways in which, you know, things that we invested in, I appreciate your comments about CSO. Like, we decided as a district to really double down because of the pandemic. But it's this year that CSO is still, let's share about the author that came to the school and the author's Wings of Fire. Big fan in my house of Wings of Fire, but here's copies of the dragons and the series. And that just all of this chatter back and forth. And even on snow days, the kids are kind of communicating with their teacher who's communicating back and really building connection that I think if you are outside the district or you don't have some young people in your house, you might think, that seems like a lot of stuff. And maybe stuff that's not necessary, but the ways in which it's building connections, certainly I, as a parent, really, really see and certainly appreciate. And the last thing I would just say is the incredible need we as a community and we as a nation have to think about digital citizenship. It just strikes me as like almost jumping right up to the top of our list of things that we have to make sure we don't lose sight of. And so appreciate from really early points to talk about where you're getting your media and how to be critical and how to think about that. And I know a lot of our educators are doing it in more informal ways and asking about resources and sources and the like. But to know that we're really calling that out at every grade level because, you know, the technology is here to stay and they probably do need more computer time. I agree. We had some funny conversation recently when my kid got on one of my computers and he's like, where are all the apps? And I was like, oh, okay. That's a different, you know, but it's all, what they're exposed to by and large comes from what you do six hours a day with them. So, but just really appreciate that we are spending the time and commitment to ensure that they don't just have the tools, that they're getting the sort of a comprehensive education on how to use them and how to hopefully use them well and make good choices and be ultimately those good citizens we're hoping we're creating. So I said a lot there. I'm really supportive and I'm just happy we're in the place that we're in right now. So, thank you.
Mr. Pouch.
Just a comment. I want to express that I really appreciate both in listening to the presentation tonight, but also in reading through the budget recommendations specific to curriculum and technology that we have with our meeting materials, that the focus of all of these proposed investments is on enhancing the student learning experience and on enhancing the ability of staff to do their jobs, which in turn obviously supports the learning experience. As Ms. Clodder noted, we have always prioritized people in this district. This is education. People are always the most important element. And as we have gone through cycle after cycle of difficult budgets, we have always prioritized people and that is as it should be. But I want everyone to understand, and I think you've done a good job communicating it, is as we look to investing in things, which certainly it's quite evident, we've gone a long time neglecting some needs in the realm of things. This is not a proposal that is about buying things because some things have gotten old and we'd just rather have newer, nicer things. Every part of this is about enhancing the ability of students to access information or staff to do their jobs. And I just want to commend that being the continued focus of this because I will always be someone who, like I think everybody in this room is, who prioritizes staff over investments in hardware or software. But this is a suite of investments that we have before us that is about enhancing the ability of students to learn. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I am struck by the impact that this team has had on our district over the last 24 months. If you think about where we were two years ago on this very day, there was a lot of uncertainty as to how we would proceed. And I agree with Ms. Fritz too. We're fortunate that we had a jump on this early. I think back to pre-COVID times when, you know, we were looking at innovation in the classroom through iPads and the one-to-one program, how exciting that was. And then, you know, you hit the pandemic and you're fully dependent on technology and not just the hardware. We're talking, you know, software and networking and just amazing. And really, you know, first off, thank you to you and your teams for keeping the lights on over the last two years. It's just remarkable, certainly in partnership with Selco and with SMC. And just, you know, thank you for the support, not just for our students, but our staff, our families, and certainly our school committee members here for helping us through some really challenging times. You know, the dependency on technology is just massive when you think about it. Very much supportive of the investments that we're making. It was great news, Amy, to see, as Ms. Effron said, that kind of doubling of the CIA budget. You don't, we don't typically talk about that, right? Going from $244,000 to $521,000 and just, yeah, just outstanding. You know, also with the recent improvements, Brian, that you mentioned with some of the hardware purchases that we made for iPads and staff laptops. These are things that I know we would talk about over the years where we'd have to kind of trim around the edges. We just could never keep up with the technology. And it really feels like now we're able to make these investments that are long overdue. You know, also the accessibility, certainly Shawna, that you talked about with CSO and parents having access to, you know, seeing what their kids are doing in the class, along with Sora for students. And you mentioned the dyslexic text option there. I thought was just outstanding. You know, and then, and as Ms. Effron said, I had it in my notes here with regards to reminding us of how the importance of digital citizenship and information literacy and media balance and well-being and news and media literacy. I mean, you know, digital footprint and the relationships and communications that are, these are things that we're, you know, teaching our students. And I feel like, you know, there are things that we weren't taught as, you know, now as adults, we're just adopting the new technology. And I really feel like some of these, you know, learnings could benefit the entire school community. Just to be responsible digital citizenship or digital citizens. I just remember when my kid started on the one-to-one iPad program and seeing kind of this commitment to digital citizenship and really kind of learning what it is about. And I think, you know, years later, just realizing how important it truly is. So it's just outstanding to see all of this progress. So, yeah, thank you again. Really appreciate it. And it's just a lot of good news for one meeting. It's just amazing. So with that, Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you. I think it is wonderful news. And I'm glad we had the opportunity to talk about some of the opportunities that came out of the crisis we experienced and how that's affecting, having a positive effect on the school district. You know, there's a mention of the increase of the curriculum budget, which was woefully underfunded prior. I mean, we're getting to a point where it's more appropriate to what we should be for a district our size. It's certainly not the largest for a district our size around the state by any stretch. But I think that in all cases, with curriculum or IT instructional technology, we are very cost-effective in what we provide. As far as I'm concerned, you know, collectively, they're the best in the business. We were extraordinarily well-positioned, thankfully, thanks to the foresight of our community. Our strategic priorities were created as a result of what the community was looking for. The school committee supported that. And the fact that we were already in a place where we were exploring a lot of these connected learning kinds of things positioned us to do a really, what I thought was an extraordinary job during the COVID crisis. Just today, I was reading an article in Education Week about kind of a history of the pandemic in a school district, a very well-resourced school district elsewhere in the country, where it talked about when they started to bring things online, just all the problems that they had that we just did not experience, thanks to our IT program and our instructional technology department. They just had done extraordinary work and these three leaders did extraordinary work in doing that. I want to thank the school committee again for your support and foresight, just as a number of years ago, you supported the ability to bring a director of school nursing onboard. And I cannot fathom how we would have managed things without Ms. Freeman in her position. You also had, were supportive of taking what was at the time, when I was first superintendent, a decade ago, plus ago, one position that oversaw all the technology, both the IT- both the IT infrastructure side and the educational part. And it had become too much for one person to, to be able to split the role into the roles that, and then to have had the stability of Ms. Powers and Mr. LaRue in this role for a number of years, working hand in hand with Mary Beth Pagnos before, Amy Clodder for the last several years, has just resulted, and, and, and thanks to their staffs, just spectacular results in terms of what we're able to do. So I'm very proud as your superintendent to, to see and have them report in this excellent work. One more thing is I know I see Norrie Christie, the president of the Power Professional Association here this evening, which we appreciate. One other piece that wasn't mentioned is that we were able to put iPads in the hands of all of our power professionals, which is a really something that, that enabled our power professionals, something they had advocated for a long time. We did not have the resources to do. Some of the funding we got, one-time funds, things of that nature over the course of the pandemic, because they really had to have those tools in their hands to do their work, especially remotely. But then, you know, that's been a real benefit as well to us. So again, thank you for all the supportive comments, but this stuff doesn't happen by accident. Because there was a vision, because there was support, because there was good thinking around how to position the district in a strong way around technology, we were able to really make, move through this effectively and, and position ourselves to be really effective going forward. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a report and discussion regarding FY23 fees and tuition. Mr. Collins will present information for fees related to busing, athletics, student activities, including music lessons and preschool tuition. Dr. Fer will consider feedback from the school committee and will then make recommendations of potential adjustments for consideration in a vote at the school committee's next meeting on March 30th. There are three documents that were enclosed, the reports, the bus fee information from February 2022 Massachusetts Association of Pupil Transportation Survey, and an athletic fee information for, for the Midland-Watson League. So with that, hand it over to Mr. Collins.
Okay. I'm just trying to call up this PowerPoint presentation.
You can call IT, Mr. Collins.
I know. Put in a ticket.
There you go.
Add one more to the chart.
Very responsive. Look at that.
Even makes house calls.
There we go.
Okay. I just got the computer.
Magic. Just his presence alone makes things happen. Okay. Well, this might not be as fun a topic, usually isn't, fees, but a necessary one in terms of your budget process for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 23. And as was mentioned previously, it's really kind of an information presentation for you to talk about, discuss, think about, and potentially receive some input from the larger community about fees for next year. It's important that we do talk about it at this particular time of year again, so that if, you know, once the school committee does take a vote on, scheduled on 30th, that we can effectively communicate the fee levels to our parents in a timely manner and then begin all the processing to collect those fees. And, you know, most importantly, in terms of timing, would be the busing fee, which we collect upfront prior to the upcoming school year so that we can have all that information in our systems and then develop bus routes and so on and so forth. So the timing of this is important as well. So the budget assumption that was laid out to you, Dr. Sawyer's recommendation at that time as kind of per usual is for fee levels to be status quo. And in prior years, pre-override, it was, there was a pattern where we were having to conduct budget reductions. And one of the strategies that the school committee would employ would be to take that status quo assumption and then raise those fees. And that would raise additional revenue, which would help close the gap. So thankfully, we're not necessarily looking at that for this upcoming school year. But again, it is important to take decisive action about what those fee levels will be for the upcoming school year. As Mr. Wensky mentioned, there are some survey documents in your packets with respect to athletic fees and busing fees. So you can see where we are there. And as you know, we tend to be on the, on the high end of fees, just in terms of both the amount that we assess and also the number of fees that we assess for all the additional services that are provided outside the regular school day. So there's some history here that just go through very quickly. Just went back to fiscal 16. You know, the busing fee back at that time was $250, then raised to 275, you know, right, and I'll say in fiscal 21, because we're operating under a hybrid model. We had limitations about seating. Department of Education about how many children could be on a bus. And all those complications, the school committee wisely chose to waive the bus fee for fiscal 21. This year, it is at $320. And the budget assumption, when I was putting this budget together for, for the current fiscal year, fiscal 22, was that we would raise approximately $470,000. We've exceeded that amount. And, you know, parcel of the fee vote and, and policy has been to charge a family no more than three times that fee, so paying no more than three children. And so the cap, family cap is at $960. There is a state law that basically says you can't charge a fee to a student who is eligible for free reduced lunch. So that provides a free ride for students with economic need. With respect to the athletic fee, again, going back to fiscal 16, at the time was 290. It's been raised slightly for a number of years. COVID fiscal 21, hybrid year, again, athletics was modified with reduced schedules and the fee, the school committee decided to reduce the fee to $275 per sport. This year, it's at 325,000, excuse me, $325. And the total budget revenue was just over $348,000. Similar type of family cap, paying three times the athletic fee. And while there's no state law in place with respect to waiving it for students in economic need, the, the district through the school committee vote has a reduced fee for students eligible for free reduced lunch at $50 per sport. Oak Middle School athletic fee just implemented in fiscal 21, really didn't take effect because of the hybrid year due to the pandemic, but the fee level was $100 per sport, $300 family cap. And we had expected to raise $25,000 revenue with that Oak Middle School athletic fee. Preschool tuitions, you can see what the current year tuitions are for the various programs, two-day, three-day, four-day and five-day programs, anywhere between $2,200 and about $4,300 for the year. And then that's broken up into monthly payments. You can see what those monthly payments are there. This chart here shows just the history of the three-day-a-week program, going back to fiscal 16, and present time, $2,900 and expected to generate $450,000 in annual revenue. And then with students, families with economic need, we use a state so-called sliding scale. It's similar to like a free reduced lunch piece where you look at the number of household residents and income, and then we reduce a percentage based upon where they fall out on that chart. Music lessons, the rates vary by the length of the lesson. You can see the rates there from 426 to 619 to 809. And 100% of those costs for the instructors are covered by the fee. Activity fees, and this is part of Dr. Sawyer's budget recommendation that he had put on a list of potential items based upon feedback from the school committee, which would be to conduct this kind of this like what-if scenario. What if we were to eliminate the activity fee with the idea behind it being that if we were eliminate in total, that maybe more students would be participating in after-school activities, which is vitally important at, at this time, you know, given the kind of social emotional status of our students and making a connection to school, any type of connection to school, whether it be chess club or, you know, middle school, track and field or, or what have you. So you can see what the fee levels are. High school, $110. Oak activity fee is $75. Sherwood activity fee is $55. These are one-time annual fees that a student would pay, and that gives them kind of all access to all after-school activities, not sports, just the after-school activities. So students who might participate in one sport, or excuse me, one club or three clubs, all just pay that flat fee. It's a very simple system. It helps offset the cost for all those advisors to the tune of about $106,000 collectively. And you can see the annual expected amounts by school there. So as I said, I know from Dr. Sawyer's recommendation, the aggregate amount, $106,000 is what is generated by the activity fees at Sherwood Oak in high school. And that's really kind of all the information I have for you tonight. It might be, I'm not sure if Dr. Sawyer has any other particular comments you want to make on this slide with respect to your recommendation or the activity fees that I might not have covered.
Well, we're, you know, certainly interested in hearing the perspective of the school committee this evening and regarding any of these fees, in particular, the idea of, of potentially eliminating the student activity fee. You know, one programmatic benefit we feel could be, you know, we don't have a, we don't know exactly how many families have chosen to not have their child participate in something because they would have to pay the fee. You know, it certainly, you know, on its face makes sense that it creates more friction between a student perhaps wanting to participate in something and being able to. And I think coming out of the pandemic especially, it is very important for us to find as many ways to encourage students to participate in activities. And in a general sense philosophically, as the school committee has always stated, we prefer not to have these fees in the first place. They were an economic necessity, but if we are able to, as a result of our budget situation, be able to absorb that $106,000 cost, it, it could promote what we're trying to do, which is engage students with as many connections to the school environment and school programming as, as we can. But curious to hear your feedback and, you know, based on your feedback and continued analysis for your next meeting on March 30th, I will bring a recommendation relative to setting fees and tuitions for next year.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Collins, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Fritz?
A comment. I think, you know, when we look at fees and tuition costs, we always need to look at cost drivers and inflationary costs just to provide the buses, athletics, all of those things. So I think we do have to look at that, but I personally prefer when we do that, we do small incremental increases. So I think it's much more manageable for families to do that. But then when I look at this year, I look at the, everyone's tax bills have gone up because the community supported a very large override. So that, that's already an increase for them. And we also have the current rate of inflation in the country, which is also another burden for families. So when I look at all of this combined, I, I fully support removing the activity fees. It's something that will give some families a breather. And as Mr. Collins stated, you know, we want students engaged in their school communities. And if it is a barrier for some family, this may be that opportunity for their child to get that connection that they need. And as Dr. Sawyer stated earlier, we're seeing more issues with mental health, social emotional needs. The activities is something that, it's a wide range for somebody to find something that they could do and connect with friends, teachers. So I fully support removing it. $106,000 is a lot of money. And we, we're normally not talking about cutting something like that. But I think this is the, the prime opportunity for us to do it as a school committee.
Dr. McGee?
So a couple of things here. I, I think as a trial to see what the impact is, dropping the activity fee is a good place to start and to allow us to see what impact it has. But getting at the impact idea, I think that when we look at activities, when we look at athletics or busing and the like, I would like us to see what do these things cost and how many students take advantage of them. So dropping the fee in the anticipation that the use is going to go up means that we need to measure how many are doing it now and how many are doing it afterwards. And I would go down the line with regard to athletics and just so that we as, as people who are responsible for the budget can see where the costs are and where the benefits are, knowing how many students take advantage of each activity and each athletic sport, and knowing what the costs are of those sports from a point of view of outside costs as well as coaches would be very helpful. And I know you can't present that to me today, but sometime in the near future would be very helpful.
Great. Ms. Pouch?
I appreciate the recommendation that's being brought before us. And, you know, it's certainly a unique position for us to be even having a conversation about scaling back fees because as folks sitting around this table, I've had, had to discuss many times over the years, this is a district that is very much overfeed out of necessity for our former financial situation. So to start off with, it's certainly a brighter, optimistic place to be sitting in and exploring how we can potentially scale some of these back. I am cognizant of the fact that different fees impact different students and families different ways. So I am interested primarily in as we start to have conversations about scaling back fees, making sure we do so in an equitable manner. Also understanding that we're probably not going to be able to start with some of our larger revenue generators. We're going to need to be cautious about this. There's still a fair deal of uncertainty coming up. And in, in that context, I do tend to like the approach to starting with the activity fee as compared to some other revenue streams. It's, you know, as Mrs. Fritz pointed out, $106,000 is certainly a lot of money, but it, as compared to some other streams, it's, it's, it's a bit smaller. But also what is covered by the activity fee is a very wide range of, of co-curricular clubs, some of which have, have, are, are, you know, I, I was fortunate to attend Shrewsbury Public Schools back before there was an activity fee and there was certainly a much wider range of programming. You know, certainly the, the fee has been an obstacle to some of those programs flourishing. But when you talk about activity fee extracurricular clubs, there's a, there's just a very wide range of programming available within there that could appeal to a broad range of students. So I, I like that. And I also, like what Dr. Sawyer mentioned about this potentially being an avenue to help students create greater connections, both to one another and to the school community. So my reaction to this is positive. But I am also curious to hear community feedback, and again, with a particular focus on how different families are impacted by different fee structures.
Great. Ms. Effernan?
Yeah, I, I thank them both the work to put this together and certainly the sentiment of all of my colleagues. Like everyone, I would, I would love it if we didn't have to have fees and that's not the universe that we, that we live in. And so I am certainly supportive of the idea that the, in many ways, the activity fee is sort of the last in, first out is sort of the easiest one for us to get rid of. It's one that we're, we relied on less over, over years because it's sort of newer. And the notion of paying a fee to join the chess club, which probably doesn't have anywhere near the same cost to the district to run as, you know, a sport that where kids are traveling and also the other, other things that I, I appreciate. I, I would love Dr. Collins and Dr., Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer, if we're able to understand the family caps and how many people hit those caps in the, in the different departments. It makes sense to me on the bus fee because every student can only ride the bus once or get one bus fee. But given on the athletic side in particular, that one student can participate in three different seasons and hit the cap and then another student, I just would really like to understand, thinking in, I think the same ways as some of my colleagues are, how do we equitably kind of pull back on fees and what's the right way to do that? And what, what are the ones that may be larger barriers for families? I don't, I don't have a perfect way to understand that, but I'm confused when I think about family caps as they can apply to students at different grade level. And does the family cap at the high school athletics also impact the family cap at Oak Middle Athletics?
No.
Those are totally different caps.
Independent.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, the place I'm struggling just for my, my colleagues, you know, trying to figure out if, I also want kids to participate in all kinds of rich programming because we believe that a lot of that programming is what helps kids sort of engage from the mental health supports. The idea that we're running an after-school bus and we don't have as many programs as we used to have, but we're trying to get kids in programs. Like, how do we kind of make that a virtuous circle? make that a virtuous circle and, and get, get kids engaged? And so, you know, I looked, initially, I mentioned earlier in our conversation with Dr. Sawyer, oh, well, the athletic fee was a little bit lower in 21, and then remembering, oh, right, because the season was a little shorter, you know, is there a way to even make a little bit of chip there so that lots of kids with different interests can engage in programs and we're making it a little bit easier, whether it is that you, you know, want some of those extracurriculars that we see with the activity fee, like a drama, or lacrosse is really your jam, and that's your, what makes you excited as a young person. We know these are the things that get kids excited to go to school. And so I'm personally, I'm, I'm not unsupportive of the idea, I just have a hard time knowing if this is the best place to, to kind of pull back on fees, not knowing which families are most impacted. And it, it does feel as though, what I like about the proposal is that it's targeting kids across three of our different buildings, and so from fifth grade up, right? And that's a good, good chunk of, of the students, and certainly when you think about athletics and the like, that's when fees start to really, really accumulate for families. So I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm struggling with what's the right way. If we're going to try to take $100,000 out of the budget, is this the best one? Or is it the, in some ways, the easiest one? And we can be pragmatic, too. That's not a terrible reason to do, to do it, but just trying to think about what is the, what is the most value that we can bring back to families who are seeing increases in their, in either their, either their tax bill or probably their, their rental fees if they're not, if they're not homeowners here because of, because of the significant investment the community has made to our schools over the last few years. So.
Sure. If I could just respond to that a little bit, in, you know, the, I remember doing a report for the school committee, and it might have been about two years ago now, I'll have to check, but it basically was a really deep dive on how fees impact families, and we grabbed a whole ton of data. And there's a series of, there's a slide deck, I'm sure it's still on the website, that I can take a look at. But, you know, the, the kind of end of that story was that, you know, families experience, it's, it's hard to make generalizations about it.
Right.
Because, you know, families and students have varied interests and also varied needs. And what I mean by that is when we looked at some of these fees, including extended day, we had some families who, with extended day athletics, maybe for a couple of older children, activity fees, I mean, we had some families paying seven, eight, nine thousand dollars a year for all of those additional services. And I gave a whole series of examples of, at the time, also full-day kindergarten, and then an example of, you know, a family with just high school students paying athletic fees and busing fees. And so, you know, they can really add up, but I, but I will say that it, it is, of course, hard to make generalizations about it because it's down to each individual family's experience. And, you know, if there are some students who, just based upon their own preference, you know, might choose to go to work after school or have their own independent thing, they might not have any fees. So it's, it just really runs the gamut. And I think that the, you know, recommendation that Dr. Sawyer made and some of the thinking behind it, again, is both with the idea that breaking down some of that friction of removing that barrier would hopefully lead to, you know, one would conclude, and that's, you know, a forecast, of course, but that, that the activity fee hits a lot of children and families, which means that might be a barrier to a large group of people, and we want to break down that barrier. It's also a large number of students to administer the fee, because these things have to be administered, right? Every fee that you charge has to be administered and monitored and collected. And so every, you know, most, all the secondary school print secretaries and are involved in the collection of this activity fee. They have to assign it to a student in power school. It needs to be collected, it needs to be followed up if they haven't paid it. Class, you know, advisors need to provide rosters to the school secretary to assign the fee. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes soft costs, if you will, in terms of collecting these as well, that would be eliminated, that would be a positive thing. So that's just, you know, so in terms of, you know, where to try to make some inroads, it is, you know, kind of collectively between the athletic and the busing and the activity fee just alone, this is the area where you're generating the least amount of revenue for that particular silo. And so from a pragmatic sense, and with the intent of trying to expand participation, that was what really led to this recommendation. So there's some pragmatism behind it as well as educational philosophy.
Great, thank you. First off, I appreciate you reminding us of the administrative, you know, challenges around just managing activity fees. There's a lot of those. I think, you know, we have a lot of fees, I think, that goes without saying, and anywhere I think you can feasibly reduce or eliminate fees, I think, is, is a positive thing. I think also it's providing a return on investment, given the last year of taxpayers supporting the override. At least to just even have this discussion right now, we probably wouldn't be having it if we weren't successful last year. I do appreciate that we're looking at the middle and high school levels, and I think student engagement in school activities is probably more important now than it's ever been. Extracurricular activities are, you know, certainly providing opportunities for students to engage with their classmates and staff outside of, you know, the normal school setting, maybe also to follow a passion of theirs that, you know, they, they have for a specific club. And I think, you know, certainly all of that, you know, contributes to improved mental health. You know, I also think, too, removing a fee is a financial obstacle for some families is also a positive thing. So I'm definitely supportive of, of, you know, the recommendation at, at this level from my perspective. But I would like to hear from the school community. I think it's important that we hear, you know, what you think about this idea, how it impacts your family, and, you know, certainly your feedback is very important between now and our next meeting. So appreciate the report. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
No, I appreciate the feedback. I'll take that into consideration as I think about making a recommendation to you at our next meeting on March 30th, and we'll look to get you as much salient information to help you make that decision.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on March 2nd was provided. Any revisions or edits? There being none, they will be approved as written. We do need to go into executive session now, so I will need a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F, and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, Shrewsbury Power Professionals Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call vote is required. Mr. Pouch?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, I thank you and good night.